Good evening and welcome to the Town of Riverhead Planning Board. Today is Thursday, June 1st, 2023. If you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the Plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Unfortunately, this evening, due to technical difficulties, we will not be able to have Zoom for our public hearing. We have one public hearing this evening for Kent Animal Shelter. And Heather?
Can everyone hear me okay? All right. For the record, Heather Chojonowski, Site Plan Reviewer. And we're here today for a public hearing for a site plan application seeking approval to demolish and reconstruct two existing buildings used for Kent Animal Shelter. Site improvements include the installation of a new sanitary system, site drainage, and a native landscaped buffer along the southern portion of the parcel. And the subject parcel is located at 2259 River Road in Calverton within the Residence B40 zoning use district, more particularly identified as Suffolk County tax numbers 600-138-1-6.1 and 600-138-1-7. The total area of the parcels is 2.13 acres, and they're currently improved with multiple pre-existing buildings all used by Kent Animal Shelter. By Planning Board Resolution 2023-028 dated April 20th, 2023, the Planning Board did classify the site plan application as a Type 2 action pursuant to SECRA and scheduled a public hearing by Planning Board Resolution 2023-029. So I have a representative for the application here. We have Marty Sinlouski. Before I hand it over to him, I just wanted to go over with the board. The Design Professional, John Condon of Condon Engineering, did make several changes to the plan as we requested. So he reduced the impervious surface coverage, as we discussed at the April 20th meeting, so that it is under what currently exists. He also reconfigured the parking to reduce the number of improved parking stalls with the rest being landbanks. And he also added a 10-foot buffer on the western side of the parcel. So if there are no other questions, I'll hand it off to Marty.
Are you folks able to hear? Is that, is it on? Loud enough?
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, so I have to eat the mic? Yeah, so the Design Professional did make the corrections that we spoke about at the April 20th meeting. The ARB did review the elevations, and they will be reviewing them again at their next meeting at the end of June. So I will hand it off to Marty to go over the details for the project.
Good evening, members of the board. I did bring additional copies of some of the color renderings if you'd like to have them for your file. As Heather had indicated, and I think what's very important here is this is really an improvement that the Animal Shelter has been looking to accomplish for quite a period of time. They had gone through a number of plans, including a number of years ago, where they were going to demolish all the buildings and build one new, larger facility on the site. That sort of ran into a dead end in terms of the permit process with the DEC, Pine Barrens, et cetera. As a result of that, the project's been redesigned. All of the buildings are staying as-is with their existing footprint. And therefore, in terms of the Pine Barrens, the permit was issued because it's considered non-development as far as they're concerned. So it's considered non-development for the Pine Barrens. We did receive the DEC approval for work along the Conic River. The property fronts the river. There will be a new landscape buffer. The site will be cleaned up, and actually, it'll be plants that are recommended by the DEC along the Conic River, non-invasive. And most importantly, we have also the permit in hand for the sanitary system. Now, that's a big one, because that process was really lion's share of the project. That includes removing all of the old onsite septic systems, you know, and some of which don't even have septic tanks. They were the old cesspool systems, which contribute nitrates to the river. And all of the buildings are being attached to a new IA system, which is the newer system that takes out the nitrates. So that all of the buildings on the site are being connected to that. That's a major upgrade for the property, which we think is really the biggest improvement. I mean, the buildings are nice, and they're an improvement for their use. But that's a huge environmental improvement to the site. So realistically, the buildings are as they are in their existing footprint. We're reconstructing them. The ARB did request that we change a roof line where we have the reverse gable in the front, or make it smaller and add something by the entrance. But when we order the next meeting, we're going to discuss with them possibly putting in an entry sign area with a flag and probably a little, like, trellis effect with a couple of stone piers, because we have stone piers on the front of the building. Because it's really not an entrance to one building. If you've gone there, you really get out of the parking lot, you enter to where the administration building is, as well as the kennel. So it's sort of an area you go to. So at the next meeting, we're going to inform them of that and leave the building elevations as they are. In the future, they do plan to renovate the other buildings, not rebuild them, but just renovate them with new materials, new siding, new roofing. And that will again enhance the balance of the site. The, as mentioned, there's, all the buffers were increased on the property to the neighbors. There's no lighting improvements. The lighting that is on the buildings now is more than sufficient for the use. All the parking and drainage has been improved. So that's a bigger improvement also. There was no onsite subsurface drainage for the roof leaders or the parking areas, so that's all being improved. And again, all the existing impervious surface is remaining as-is in addition to the building. So everything is remaining. It's considered non-development as far as they're concerned. We're here now to go through the process to get the site plan approval, which is really the last thing we would need to then go for a building permit, because we do have all the other permits, including Board of Health, are all currently in hand. So we're ready to go. I'd be happy to answer any questions any of the board may have.
This has been kicking around a long time. I'm hoping that, you know, we get going as soon as we can. The people from Kent are part of the solution. Looking forward to helping them out.
My brief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to come up at this time to speak on this?
Hi, my name is Conrad Grossman. I live on River Road. My property is about 150 feet away from Kent Shelter. I love animals, it's great. I was just wondering, regarding the noise from the dogs, there's supposed to be some, I guess, sound suppression in the buildings? Is that going to be, is that going to happen as far as sound suppression, so we don't hear so much barking?
Are you able to come up and address that?
The building is reconstructed. Just so that the interior of the building and all that is insulated and sound insulated. So the noise as far as the kennels interior will be mended as such. When the kennels that are outside are covered, they're under the existing roofs. However, the current kennels basically just have concrete walls with a chain-link fence. The new kennels do not come out as far as existing kennels. They're actually under the overhang. And we have what are called gator kennels. These are kennels that are designed for this particular use. So they're a solid kennel. And the openings that are, you know, through to see into the doors from outside have a, you know, a laminate enclosure on them. They are open on the top, they are opening air. But they are a designed, you know, kennel enclosure. And if you notice on the rendering also, what we did also do is we then added a masonry wall, which will block the noise that comes up about four feet high. So the kennels are set back, they're blocked in by a wall. They're not, the exterior kennels can't be enclosed with sound control. But we've done it in a way to mitigate the noise. It certainly will not exceed and would certainly be below any current levels. As far as the exterior kennels are concerned, the interior kennels is a whole new facility in there. They have new doors to control when they go, you know, the kennels, the animals are on the inside, closed door. When they want them to go in the runs, they'll open it up. They can go out and they could run. I imagine they will bark a little bit, but they don't have the direct view anymore of people. That usually triggers that barking. And again, they are engineered kennels with additional roof sound wall around the kennel areas to mitigate that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Greg Bergman with the Riverhead Planning Department. Being that, I would just recommend, being that we didn't have Zoom available for this public hearing tonight, it's not our standard practice, but I would just recommend that the board keep the public hearing open for eight days. That will put us to next Friday, June 9th, for the submission of written comment. This meeting will be posted on the town's website on the Channel 22 link. So if anybody out there in Internet land wants to view the public hearing, they can submit written comments to the Planning Board or any Planning Department members until Friday at 4:30.
Perfect.
Hi, I'm Pam Green. I'm the Director of Kent Animal Shelter. And I, we have been trying to do this project for at least 25 years. And, hello. So this has been a long time coming. It'll be great for the animals there. It'll be great for the volunteers, the staff, the visitors that are coming there. It'll be an improvement all around. Compared to what it is now, it will be, you know, a huge improvement for the environment as well. There's going to be the nitrogen-reducing septic system. And, you know, it's this old cement block building now. It's 55 years old. I've been there for 30-something years. And, you know, it's a great organization. We've helped the community, we've helped animals. And I, you know, it's so needed. And over the years, we were not able to find a place. You know, the zoning wouldn't allow us to go here and there. The Pine Baron Society, that was another problem, because we are within the borders of, even though we're practically outside of the Pine Barrens, that was a problem as well. But we're on the same footprint. It'll be a beautiful, state-of-the-art facility. Noise mitigation, a new quarantine isolation building for animals coming in, so that they're not immediately introduced into the population. Meet and greet rooms and puppy rooms and kennels. And it's really going to be very nice, I think. And we just got a $200,000 grant from New York State.
Fantastic, congratulations. That's wonderful.
To, from the Capitol grant. And one of the shelters that was picked to receive that. So we're pretty excited.
You're on your way. You've worked very hard over the years. I know that for a fact.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do for the animals. Okay.
Okay, let's close the public hearing portion of the meeting. It will remain open for eight days, I think you said, Greg? Eight days for written comment, because the Zoom wasn't available tonight. So moved.
I'll second that.
Vote, please. Bear?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Naro?
Aye.
Nasseri?
Waskey?
Yes. Okay, that is all for our public hearing this evening. Now, we have BFJ attending for information with the Planning Board. So whoever would like to come up from BFJ? You want to come here?
Sure.
That's fine. Just be careful with the microphones, those are live. Thanks, Noah.
Did you call agenda from us?
No.
Thank you for meeting with us today.
If you all could just state your name.
Sure. So for introductions, maybe we can go around. My name is Noah Levine. I'm the kind of principal in charge for this project from BFJ Planning.
And I'm Emily Younger. I'm a planner for BFJ Planning.
I'm Frank Fish, President of BFJ Planning, and we'll be involved more in the zoning aspects of this.
And I should also mention that we have with us LKMA, representatives from LKMA. Do you want to come up and introduce yourselves?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm Ray DeBoris, President of LKMA.
And I'm Vin Corrado with LKMA.
Okay, so I'll just get started. The purpose of the meeting today, at least for us to meet with you, is to really listen to some of your thoughts and concerns, issues and opportunities related to the comprehensive plan. We are well underway. Joanne has been involved with us as a steering committee member, kind of keeping tabs, and hopefully she's been relaying the progress so far. We have provided a little bit of a schedule on the back of the agenda, just to give you a sense of where we are in the process. I know it's, sometimes these tables can be a little bit overwhelming. So just kind of to give you a broad sense of where we are, we've been having monthly meetings with the steering committee. We actually have a steering committee meeting next Wednesday, where we discuss deliverables, issues and opportunities, and other things to make sure that we're staying on track. They've also helped us to prepare for public engagement meetings, of which we've had one public meeting, a workshop at Suffolk Peter. That was about, I guess, almost two months now, two months ago. But that was well-attended. We had over 100 attendees. We are also conducting focus group meetings with various stakeholders in different topic areas. Next week, on Thursday, we do have a focus group meeting with representatives from the Planning Board, ARB, and the Zoning Board. We're excited for that meeting, because we think that those three boards, typically in a lot of communities, are working in different environments and are dealing with different issues. But there might be some crossover, sometimes related to, you know, where, you know, coordination of different applications and, you know, what goes in front of which board. And, you know, there might be some synergies. And so we're excited to kind of bring those groups together. We're here today to kind of have an open-ended conversation with you. We have the core members of our team. And we don't have specific things to kind of present to you at this point, as we're kind of in the fact-finding portion of the project. We're really starting to develop the chapters as we speak. The one document that we did do is called "The Summary of Trends and Opportunities." That's available on the project website. That essentially took all of the information that we were able to gather from AKRF, who had been working with the town from 2020 to 2022. So we took their material and synthesized it, and then synthesized other studies that we were able to gather from the town and from other places into one report that really, you know, brought us to a place of, okay, where are we now? What is our understanding of issues and opportunities? And so that is really our starting point in kind of addressing some of the priority issues in the town. So with that, maybe I would say-
Have you guys, like, identified, you know, priorities for the town?
Yeah, yeah, we're kind of well underway. And I think that that document, if you haven't had a chance to review it, is a really good primer, I would say. We're getting into the details. We had a very good meeting today with the planners and Dawn to work through the zoning issues, to find out what's been a, you know, kind of a problem with the zoning, both in geographic area standpoint, and which zoning districts are working, which zoning districts aren't working, and why. And, you know, we need to go back and kind of work through some of these issues. But we know that you probably have some priorities that you would want to discuss with us. So-
I felt like I was giving them the opportunity to ask, since I am on the steering committee.
Right, right, right.
I know that at this point, the point that we're at with the steering committee, that we've just been identifying the problems. And I have nothing to report back as to how those problems are going to be fixed. I don't know if this board has specific questions that they would like to focus on with you to see what path we're going to be going in.
Well, I guess one of the more important points is the warehousing and the Haiku warehouses in country areas versus more industrial areas, things that were never contemplated in the old master plan, because they weren't uses that were around at that point in time. So we're trying to get a graph and understand Haiku versus Redwood Warehouse and things like that that are important to the community.
There's also been a lot of pushback from the public, which I'm sure you're aware of, the traffic. How are you going to deal with the traffic? And if you have a plan, then obviously you must have a plan.
Yeah, to work out, George.
The current infrastructure, absolutely, will not disappoint. That kind of, you know, the kind of volume that we can, you know, we can guess at, we don't know who it is.
Right.
You say you don't know who it is, that's going to be the tenant.
Right.
You know, certainly when you look at your drawings, there's a lot of trucks, lots of trucks, lots of trailers.
Right. But not our drawings.
We have an obligation to the public to deal with that.
Yeah. And the way I think we see it, there's kind of two different areas. There's the industrial zoned areas, and then there's the kind of PD and the PIP, you know, EPCAL areas, which are kind of under a separate kind of a track, let's just say. The industrial zoned areas are a little more predictable and are under the, you know, usual methods of control with the Planning Board and the Zoning Board and so on. We are kind of working to kind of better understand that the plans are happening over at Calverton and the Plan District. And our transportation advisors are working with us to kind of clarify some of those mitigation measures. They're really the experts on that, particularly the transportation impacts.
Can everybody just speak up a little bit? They're having a hard time.
Yeah, I think I'm a little hearing as well.
I might just add, today, we had a very good meeting. Actually, everybody's here that we met with. And we are looking at trying to balance both, on the one hand, your tax base, which the industrial area and EPCAL, you know, represents. But on the other hand, long-term, trying to reduce the impacts of development there. So we are looking at the regulations, the zoning code, and whether we can, over time, tighten some of those regulations. We're looking at FAR, for instance, for floor area ratio. And because that has a direct impact on traffic. And the guys at each end of this table, you know, Vin and Ray are going to be looking at that, that traffic issue. So we're trying to, over time, if we can, reduce the development potential that's creating the traffic, but at the same time, allowing development, so that we get a balance. But overall, what we're trying to do is reduce the impacts of traffic.
Well, one of the ways you might want to consider doing that is by limiting industrial uses to the south side of State Road 25. Having huge warehouses on country roads, I don't think is in the best interest of the town. The south side, there's a lot of industrial, including EPCAL there now. And you want a state road.
And that's where you have your existing industrial zoning districts. So not kind of pushing into- Not pushing into other areas that are not industrially zoned. Yeah. I don't think that's anything we would consider, expanding the industrial zones.
Well, maybe not expanding, but maybe shrinking, you know?
Right, right. You know, I think one thing we're also looking at is, you know, with regard to building heights, you know, they're clarifying those different uses, what they mean, Haiku warehousing versus logistics, you know, making sure that that's clear in the code.
Can you expand on that? I think that that's something that really needs to be addressed, because most people do not know the difference between a logistics center, a warehouse, you know, all the different projects that are looking to come in here. They go by names that we've never heard of back when the comprehensive plan was last updated. So I think that it's important to identify exactly what these projects are.
The different types of warehousing, you're right. I mean, these are new things. I think, Vin, you're probably most familiar, between the two of us, on the various types and what type of traffic they could generate.
That's typically the thing.
They go by, they go by this overall name, this new generic name of logistics center. But there could be a variable variations on the theme within your logistics center definition. Like, I would say that the logistics center could include something like Amazon, which is a really intense, from, really intense user from a traffic standpoint, all the way down to something more like a traditional warehouse, where appliances and things like that are stored. But they don't tend to be stored long-term anymore. That's why, and the Haiku, the Haiku definition is that the ceiling height is very high, and they are able to store more goods within a, within a, the same footprint building. So that's kind of where the Haiku notion comes. But all of these things are within, like, a definition that New York State actually has for logistics center. We've been putting, we've, I've probably reviewed about 10 million square feet logistic center applications. We've been struggling to get a handle on the trip generation, on the traffic generation aspect of it. And lately, I've been asking applicants, I haven't reviewed any in Riverhead Town, but applicants all over the island, to give us traffic counts at existing ones. There are a lot of them. If you drive down 95 in New Jersey, it's lined with logistics centers. They don't tend to generate a lot of traffic during the, during the peak hours, because they don't want their truck drivers on the road during the peak hours, because they have to pay them to sit in traffic, right? The 24-hour traffic generation is about equivalent, maybe a little bit higher than the old warehouse use. They don't generate a lot of jobs either. So they don't generate a lot of traffic.
Well, there's also a big difference between a distribution center and a warehouse. And I think that when we are going further, that it's important that we define-
The old notion of the warehouse where the stuff sits there, you know, gets manufactured somewhere, gets shipped in there, sits there, and they send out 10 refrigerators to this PC rigid, that just doesn't exist anymore. The whole business model in the industry isn't like that anymore.
Right.
These logistics, this is a new, and, you know, in fairness to the engineers that submit and evaluate these things, they can only use the information that's in the public domain with respect to traditional warehousing. But that's why I've been having them do traffic counts at existing ones, functioning ones, not too many on Long Island, but some in New Jersey. And we're going to bring that information into the- information into the, into the master plan.
And we talked with, actually, your staff, planning staff today about, we didn't talk about this differentiation, but we did talk about uses in the industrial zone. Are all the uses appropriate, some uses that are not appropriate? And also, you've raised a good question, which we just discussed now, and that is the differences in traffic impacts. So there may be, we may get a little bit more refined in that, you know?
Would I be, would I be correct in assuming that the fact that a 50-foot tall warehouse would be constructed to allow robotics to do most of and all of the picking and the packing?
That, I don't, I don't know the specific answer to that, but in the definition, in the descriptions that I've seen, a lot of it is automated.
Okay, and and I, I know that they literally now can back a trailer and and have that unloaded robotically. And so with that, what I'm, what I'm, I guess I'm trying to get a handle on is when we get to, when we get to the question of how many people, how many people are going to be employed, you know, and why we need 50 feet, you know?
That's why the traffic generation is low.
You know, there's a lot of pushback from people, that's a farm, we're a farming community here. You put 50, a 50-foot building in the middle of farms, it's not pretty. And, you know, and in this particular area, a lot of the development rights have been sold off, so they will remain farms. So environmentally, and we can, we can keep talking about this all night, you know, what are the, where do we stand, you know, what are the impacts, you know, today, five years from now, 10, 20, 30, 50, one world, none of us are here, but, you know, what are the impacts then?
Well, we're going to be able, as you know also, we're, based on what we come up with, we don't know exactly where that is yet, we're trying to get input, but we are looking at something that will pass the muster of a generic environmental impact statement, which we'll be doing with this plan. And we're going to obviously look to reduce impacts, truck impacts, environmental impacts, if we can. Now, that's why I said earlier, we're looking at the FAR and perhaps tightening it up in these industrial areas and thereby reducing total built square footage, and that will reflect in the transportation analysis that, you know, Vin and Ray are, will be doing. So you're going to see, Town Board's going to see that environmental impact statement. That's where we're, we're headed, to try to get a statement that clearly reduces impacts, but keeps-
I don't like the but. I like the, I like the reduction.
Yeah, but keeps also beneficial impacts. We don't want to wipe out your tax base.
Correct.
And the prime beneficiary of that tax base is your school district. So we want to be careful about how, you know, we want to have a balance. And but the balance, what we're looking at now, is trying to get some changes to it, what we're just hearing from you.
Right.
And in that direction of trying to reduce those impacts and looking at that. And we're not looking at, you know, just in terms of height, you know, I've, by the way, New Jersey's and other places are a good example, where you see some cities or towns that have done, you know, 125 feet for these, you know, bigger facilities. We're not looking at that. We're not looking at that.
Can you explain exactly why the industrial areas of towns are important for the economical development of the town, that, you know, so that people understand why we have to have, there has to be an area within the town that is industrial? And there's a reason why Calverton was chosen for that with the, the expressway being right there. It just was the perfect place at the time for that to be there. And I'm wondering if you have anything to, you know, educate people as to why it's there, by, you know, how the whole thing works? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to express it with numbers, you know, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but of course, the tax base is critical. This is a huge portion of the, you know, it's part of the economy of the town. The airport, you know, with Drummond before, you know, while I was working, that was a major driver of economic activity. And, you know, it's certainly, that was a big loss to the town's coffers when that ceased to kind of become the aerospace industry that was once there. And so I think recapturing some of that, those jobs, tax base there is, is, you know, kind of critical for the town.
I'd add the obvious one, which I don't think I need to get into in too much detail, but those towns that tend to have an industrial tax base, it generates no public school children. Your school district, the tax money going to your school district is a net, net plus. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's what really be a substantial importance to your school district. Now, the rest of it goes to, obviously, the school district's getting the most of the taxes, but obviously the town is the, the other beneficiary of that, any special districts. But there, got away as a town, you're going to have some impacts. And they're going to be, an important one is traffic. And the traffic mitigations and those can cost money, are they going to be on the county or the state or yourselves? And what we're going to try to do is balance that to get tighter restriction, lower FAR, lower total built space, but without harming that tax base significantly so that you get a balance. And so that's where we're kind of been talking with staff about, and that's the, that's the direction, I think, we're kind of looking at right now.
I think, I think there's some flexibility there in that, you know, there are some places where we think that there might be, right now, the, the height is 30 feet, which is fairly low compared to, you know, when you think about the fact that a single family home is 35 feet, you know, to giving some small bit of flexibility, not too much, but some small bit of flexibility in specific locations that are, you know, close to the LIE or, you know, can can get easily, you know, in and out of the, you know, where transportation is as much of an issue. And then we're looking at opportunities to really use that as an opportunity potentially to capture TDR or to get development that, you know, is a little bit more sustainable with green technology or really to get something out of that, make sure that it's well designed so put in the appropriate criteria to, to reduce the visual impact if there is some kind of increase above 30 feet. And we're not talking about 50 feet or, you know, higher, but something, you know, something slightly higher to accommodate what's being built now. 30 feet is really substandard for most industrial uses that are being built throughout Long Island and the region. So you're really not really going to capture any of that development.
I don't know how much time we have, I know you have to leave, but, so I hate to jump around, but one of the things that I think is going to be really, really important is clarity because the plan we have now, you know, we allow 500 apartments downtown, but if you, you know, you do A instead of B, you can have more, you know, it's, it's clear as mud, I'll put it to that way. I think what we have to do is know the infinite number of how many people will come here due to what the zoning allows, apartments, houses, whatever. And that should be the number, you know? I don't, I don't think, you know, you have your set plan and then just allow new things to come. I mean, it has to be crystal clear, black and white, on what the zoning will allow, and then we will know how many people could eventually be here. And we have to stop, you know? If the, if the, if the zoning is not clear and concise, it leaves room for interpretation, gray areas, and that just means more and more and more. That's just my thought there.
And that's a difficult, that one is going to be a challenge both for us and staff and whoever eventually writes your actual zoning, because as you know, this plan should set the stage. So we're going to try to put in the plan the ideas that, you know, Town Board and yourselves and the public and our meetings give us, so they'll be in the plan. And we'll try to, the IIS will try to clarify those impacts for you. The big thing I want to say is then, after the plan gets adopted, depends on how you look at it, either the devil's in the detail or God's in the detail. The detail of that zoning and how it's written is going to clarify the number of, you know, the number of units, number of square footage. But we need to set the policy for it in the plan. The other I'd say about that is, no one can control the market. In other words, the market's going to, could change over time, residential market, whoa, we just seen huge changes in the industrial market. So even though the zoning might be, hopefully it'll be clearer, we can't control, so that's going to set a, a number for parcel of land. But it depends on the real estate market, is if it gets built out or when it gets built out.
But the zoning takes how much can you-
How much can they-
But there are also, as we've been talking with the planning department, there are these kind of peculiar things, sometimes barriers that were unforeseen in the zoning code that, you know, you only find out after the fact because developers come and say, this isn't working, this is always going in for variance. And we're hearing about a couple of those. And so we'll want to kind of identify those, that might help to kind of, you know, hopefully make fear those barriers so that development can happen as was intended by the various districts.
What is the, what is the posh traffic? No, go ahead, you're first.
Just to talk a little bit about traffic from EPCAL, just to put it in context, the generic environmental impact statement, that's generic, that was done for EPCAL, I think, six or seven years ago. Talked for, talked about adding an additional lane on Middle Country Road from William Floyd Parkway all the way through this, through the EPCAL site, all the way east to the Long Island Expressway. So that was, you know, you have, is going to have a significant amount of trucks that was anticipated. That's the connection to get them off local roads, get them to the LIE as, as quickly as possible. And that was in two stages. It was a short-term development and then a, a longer-term ultimate development, and it involved a lot, installing traffic signals, a lot, new traffic signals at a lot of intersections as well as the additional lane in each direction.
But it was all triggered, it was all, the way VHB did the, wrote the mitigation plan, it was all triggered, it didn't really, it wasn't on a defined amount of development on the property, it was on the, the amount of traffic that that development, whatever the development was, would generate. So that's the way they envisioned phasing the mitigation for EPCAL, this is specific to EPCAL. At such time as this, as development on the site is proposed or planned or permitted, that generates this many trips, this is the mitigation that has to be in place before it gets open. And they did that, it was not only in two stages, it was in three or four different stages, out to 20, 35, I think. It was in five-year chunks. So depending on the ultimate, the ultimate, it's actually a smart plan because depending on, it, it's adaptable. If development changes, the trigger still is how much traffic it generates. So if, if it never generates that amount of traffic, then some, some of the mitigation becomes unnecessary. But the assumption, the base assumption Ray is right, the base assumption was that the widening of 25 is going to be necessary no matter what.
How do you, how do you, until you know your tenant, how do you, how do you come up with a plan?
Well, that's right.
You have to know your tenant, who it is, who's your tenant.
Right, but it was-
That's number one, you know, number two, I mean, I, I've always, I, I've thought this from, from day one, extend the expressway, extend the expressway onto the property, that's not impossible, not, for you, I wouldn't think it would be impossible in your plan. Number one. Number two, so another thought that I had to minimize the amount of, of aesthetic changes, what about going down with the building? Dig the building down. Bring it down into, I mean, I, you know, I'm not a builder, I'm not saying that I am, but I mean, it's, it has to be a possibility. You know, you're not going down into the aquifer or into the, or into Ohio Sound if you were to build down. I mean, yes-
They did that with Riverhead Buildings Supply.
I'm sorry?
They did that with Riverhead Buildings Supply at EPCAL.
Build it down, build it down so that you could, you could, you'd be down into the property and it'll minimize the, the effects of the surrounding area.
Although, when you think about it, let's say it were zoned residential, the height could be 35 feet. That's the normal height for any house, and you can, normally what a person does is they plant trees around their house. The great advantage here is with industrial, which is currently, you know, as Noah said, limited to 30 feet, which is unusual to have an industrial building, less than a single family house. But even if it were 35 feet, you, you, your board has the power in site plan or subdivision to look at the landscape plan and to make sure that all those buildings are adequately, you know, in terms of visibility, that, that's a height that is very doable in terms of, you know, hiding, I shouldn't say hiding, that's not, you know, because it might be a beautiful building, but it might be enhanced by good landscaping. So we're not looking at something that can't be, you know, visually mitigated in terms of height.
Okay. I know that we're not here just to discuss that, so I know that you have a few other things that you'd like to talk about, so if we just move that on to other aspects.
I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, for the traffic, I guess. In the master plan, in your review, do you make recommendations on county and state roads also?
We will be, I mean, we haven't done that yet, but we will be making recommendations. And there are, we already know the, the intersections are operating poorly right now, including 25 and Edwards, 25-
Not that they'll listen to us, but at least we can tell them.
No, but, I mean, once you have a plan, then you, then ultimately you can develop projects from that. You can, you know, talk to the state, you can talk to the county and say, look, we need help, we need, we need these roads approved, how about getting a, a design project going? We have the base document for that, the master plan, and everything can kind of emanate from that over a period of time.
What Ray's saying is very important because with an adopted, or I'm, we're all doing this because we're hoping, you know, this would be an adopted plan. The state agencies are supposed to look at an adopted plan. It doesn't say they have to, you know, legislation doesn't say they have to follow it, but it says they have to consider it. So that's something that I think can influence state and county.
Early in the scoping process for New York State DOT projects is the question of whether the, whether the project is part of a local plan, because the DOT doesn't want to invest money, time and effort in scoping and designing projects and then go to a public hearing and it, and the, the public turns out against the project, even though the local government may have encouraged them to come in and do it. So that's a, that's a question in, in chapter one of the design reports that are written for state DOT projects.
And the state's own form for an environmental assessment form, I think it's question at the end, question 17 or 18.
Right.
It says, it specifically says, is this proposed action consistent with the local comprehensive plan? So everybody has to answer that. Now, it doesn't say that they can't provide you or the town with all the reasons they're not going to do that or they can't do that, but they do, they do have to check that box one way or the other. So it does, it does, if you have this in plan, you're making recommendations as a town on a state road or a county road, at least they're supposed to consider it. And that's better than, you know, not having it.
Okay.
You have a, you have a plan here that you've got in front of us, where are you in that, in that steps?
Well, we started in January, so we are, we, I would say, we are in month, you know, six or five, five or six, where we're basically, we've had, we've conducted a workshop, we've, are conducting our stakeholder meetings, we're in the process of writing the chapters. And so kind of that middle stage of, you know, month five, six, seven, of really-
And that's where the joint meeting is going to be, another, you're going to have another joint meeting?
Yes, we, we do plan to have a, a joint meeting and we need to schedule that, but we can schedule that meeting. You know, this, this was also done, you know, as the plan was, you know, begun, we do have a number of members of the Town Board on the committee who are very attuned to what's going on, and Joanne is involved as well. And so we can schedule joint meetings, but also we know that we do have representatives that are hopefully keeping you abreast of what's going on. But we do think it would be a good idea to schedule a meeting. Perhaps, I would say, you know, in a month or two, we'll have more fully fleshed out and- menus and zoning recommendations. And so I think that would probably be a better time to do it. We are working through those right now, and so we'll have those in the summer at some point. One thing, you know, if I could just kind of pivot the conversation a little bit, because I think it would be very helpful for us to hear from you as a planning board, you know, things that you experience, you know, issues with the zoning code, issues with your ability to conduct kind of site plan review for projects. Are there things that you find, you know, to be difficult or regulations that you need to be changed? You know, for example, we keep hearing on Route 58 that there's, you know, the need for more landscaping to reduce the visual impact of some of the, kind of, the commercial centers that are there and, you know, have trees and so on. That's just one example, but we want, we're kind of curious to know from you, what examples do you think where the comprehensive plan could help you in giving you more of an ability to conduct site plan review and kind of improve local field properties and mitigate impacts?
And hence landscaping certainly would be important.
But I think we have been diligent on request, requiring that in the applications.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I'm not saying that you haven't, I'm just asking, I'm just asking you, you know, what can we do to, to, to help, I guess?
I personally like burns on Route 58 and other projects, slight burns, like two or three feet, because then you have your plantings on it. So you can see the building, you can see the business, but you don't see the sea of paving. Just, that's a little minor thing.
I know protection of the hamlets are very important. I would like to see strict mandates that, you know, I don't think that we should be opening up to franchises coming in, you know, going into a hamlet and taking away from the mom and pop deli and putting a 7-Eleven in. You know, our hamlets, they're, they're important to the history of the town of Riverhead, you know, from Wading River all the way out to Jamesport, and they're unique. And once we, you know, saturate those areas, they're going to be gone and we can never get them back again. So that, that's something extremely important, I think, to most of us.
And that's come across to us in the discussions we've had a little bit earlier.
Yeah, I know that we've discussed it, I just, I don't wanna sit here like I don't have anything to say.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you're adding it, yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
All right, is there anything else that you'd like to discuss?
I think so.
Okay, we tried to get you out of here by seven, so, thank you so much for your time, and I know how much work you all have been putting into, into this, and it's been a pleasure working with you so far, and I look forward to seeing how this plays out as, as we go into the future, so.
Yeah, we'll definitely have a better sense towards the end of the summer on, on kind of our recommendations, we just wanna make sure that we vet everything and, you know, before we kind of.
Right, it's a process.
It's a process.
Yeah, a row wasn't built in a day.
And we saw the summer as a time of a little bit of hard work for us getting this so that when we hit the fall, we're, we're ready with.
Come on out on Saturday in the fall so you can see exactly what we're talking about with traffic.
Yeah, you want, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, they are going to, I don't know when that's going to be, we have another meeting next year. It's a lot for them to take in and.
I don't have a card, but I can write my name on this.
Hey, Dawn, you should mention to the town board that the acoustics in here are terrible.
We're moving.
They've been here a long.
We're moving.
Oh, that's right, we're moving.
I'd also add, just the comprehensive plan website is on that agenda that we gave you on the paper, so you can check out all the documents.
The summary of trends is, I think, a helpful primer, so, yeah.
Matt, can you take down those boards? Thank you. Just find anybody that comes up, so that everybody can see. Thank you. Okay, do we have any public comments on the resolutions?
Good evening, Mike Foley Reeves Park, and I'd like to speak about resolution one, the Merritts Creek Townhouses. I noticed that there is 26 three-bedroom townhouses that are proposed to replace three single-family houses and one two-family house. And reading off of the resolved portions of the resolution, and I'll quote it, resolves that the clerk of the planning board is hereby authorized to forward a copy of this resolution to Greg Folk, Jeff Zahn, Riverhead, New York, the Riverhead Sewer District, the Riverhead Water District, the Town Engineer Chief Fire Module, the Riverhead Building Department, Officer Town Attorney, Planning Board, Town Clerk, and that's it for who's going to be noticed. We know that there are density issues with our school system. So, you know, just doing simple math, you have to assume that every three, three-bedroom townhome is gonna have two kids. So let's just say that there's 26 townhomes, 52 kids. And now we need to subtract the children from the three one-family houses and the one-two family house. So let's take five families out of the 26 and reduce it to 21. Simple math to me is that there'll probably be a net increase in our school system of 42 students. I was wondering if the Riverhead School District was aware of this, this singular project? Were they informed that this was happening? Was, was there any feedback from them on their ability to accommodate an additional 42 kids for this single project? And we all know that there are hundreds of other units that are being contemplated in various stages of development or approval in downtown Riverhead. And looking at those apartments, a large majority of those are studios in one bedrooms. So we can assume when it's a studio in a one-bedroom, the odds are there's not going to be a child, a student. The two, the two-bedroom houses, obviously you gotta do the math on that as well. But I just looked at this and, and was wondering if the Riverhead School District had any feedback on this as to what the impact of this increased density, including children, would have on the school district?
That's a good thought, very good thought.
Well, there's public hearing coming up.
Yep, well, there is, but it would be better to get.
Yeah, we're gonna schedule a public hearing, Mike, number one, number two, I don't know if that's a, how can you, how can you answer the question because you wouldn't know whether they would be in grade school, in middle school, or in high school? You know, if you, if you, if you use your, your examples, you know, and you split it up into thirds, it would be very little impact at all. I mean, when there's one project, I get what you're saying, and I, and I'm not saying I disagree, okay? I don't know, I don't know that, did they ever get contacted, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, Joanne, is there a way that there could be some contact? Or Greg, do you have an answer on this? Would there be a way of at least letting them know? Listen, they should certainly be aware of what's happening with the apartments.
Well, there is a public hearing coming up, so.
And the public hearing's important, but because the notification did not include the Riverhead School District, I, I felt that that would be something that would make sense from a planning and a community basis, to be on that list of people to be contacted.
Well, I think possibly Greg might have an answer to that, but at the same time, I agree with what George is saying about, we're not talking about an influx of that amount of kids technically going into kindergarten and all at the same time. So it would kind of, you know, guestimating that they would be, you know, different levels of, of grade school. And we can't assume that they're all going to have two kids either, you know, but I think that we'll bring Greg up and see.
Joanne, I think the other part of this is that we have to look at it comprehensively. We know there are hundreds of apartments, thankfully, a majority of them are studio in one bedroom.
Yes, and we've looked into that in the past, and we have questioned that.
But when you look all of it, when you look at all of it, 42 students in this singular project, and then times that by five, six, seven, eight, now we're not talking 400 students, we're talking, oh, excuse me, 40 students, we're talking three or 400. Thank you.
All right, thank you, board, again, Greg Bergman with the Riverhead Planning Department. So, you know, the planning department, we listened to comments, we listened to what's said at town board meetings, we responsive to what happens at public, you know, at planning board meetings. So I like to respond with facts, you know, I, I foiled the Riverhead Central School District. Now, I didn't foil every single depart, every single apartment complex or residential complex in the town of Riverhead. But with all the focus on the development in downtown, I did foil the larger multifamily residential apartment complexes in, on East Main Street in downtown. So out of the 251 apartment units, now while that does comprise studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom units, we currently have approximately, out in the larger complexes, I'm not including the little ones and twos, 251 residential units. Currently constructed and occupied within the downtown Riverhead zoning, the DC1 zoning district, there are 36 students that come out of those 251 apartments. Now, there was, I think it was a 2019 SUNY Stony Brook Real Estate Institute market study of market rate apartments within Suffolk County and Nassau County. They basically found that the average school contribution, I believe it was along the lines of .1 students per unit, per dwelling unit. Now, when I average out those, you know, when I look at the numbers of the school-age students coming, coming from the downtown Riverhead zoning, the DC1 zoning district, those numbers pan out. So, I mean, 42 students out of 26 apartments, I have no idea where that number comes from, I don't know if it's based in fact, if it's just, hey, I'm gonna pick a number and I'm gonna multiply it by 26, you know, I mean, here's facts. You know, anybody in the town can fill out a foil request, you don't have to work for the town of Riverhead, anybody can foil the Riverhead Central School District. All I did was say, I'd like these addresses and I'd like the number of students coming out of those addresses. They'll respond to you with that information. I mean, again, 251 students, 251 apartments, 36 students. And keep in mind, that doesn't include people that move from within the town that are already within the district. And that's not to say that every, all of those 36 students are gonna be going to the elementary school or the high school. I mean, that's 36 students out of 251 apartments spread across all age groups. So I just, those are real numbers coming out of those downtown apartments. If anybody would like to, you know, you can send me an email, I can send you the responses, you can see the numbers, you can see the response right from the school district, so.
Thank you, Greg. You never disappoint.
Just, just to add, thanks. How many three-bedroom apartments are in those 261, Greg? Are there five? I don't think so. I think the largest density of apartments here are two-bedrooms. And you can assume if people are buying a three-bedroom apartment, I don't think it's a far stretch to think that there's gonna be at least two children in each apartment. So where the numbers you have give you comfort, it's apples and oranges when you're comparing studios to three-bedrooms. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, anyone else wanna come up on the resolutions?
Hi, Kate Fulham, I'm the executive director for East End Food Institute.
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
Sure thing. Kate Fulham, executive director for East End Food Institute, we're item number four on the agenda, and I just wanted to say thank you, everyone in this room, on staff and board and support staff have worked really hard to get us to this point. I didn't have to come tonight, I actually missed a softball game for my daughter, but I just found out that she hit a triple, and I feel like I'm hitting a triple professionally. So thank you all so much, we really appreciate it, you know, from the planning staff and, you know, getting through the ZBA hearings, we're gonna be able to centralize the East End Food Kitchen and Farmer's Market, revive the Hometown Florist, you know, which historically had such a great linkage to agriculture as we do, and just really appreciate, because it's been a lot of coordination to keep us on a timeline, and, you know, Matt Charters has been fabulous just quarterbacking this whole thing and getting everybody in the right places at the right time with support from the rest of the team. So we really appreciate it and happy to.
I think it's gonna be more like a home run tonight.
Cheers, yeah. Well, we have a long way to go, as we know, we're working together with, you know, getting the, the next steps of merging the lot and the, you know, the full site plan approval and coordination. I think we're gonna fit in nicely with the comp plan, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with the town and with this board.
And we're so happy to see the reuse of, of the building now, that's fantastic.
Yes.
And what you're doing, teaming up with the farmers, that's so important and needed in, you know, the, the East End, so.
Thanks.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Have a good night, thanks.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the resolutions.
I'll move resolution number 40, which assumes lead agency status and issues a negative declaration for the, for the secret process.
Second.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Aye.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Nareszky.
Aye.
Waskey, yes.
I'll move resolution 2023-041 for the Merritt Creek Townhouses to schedule a public hearing.
Second motion.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Nareszky. Waskey, yes.
I'll move resolution number 42 for 818 Royal Avenue Minor Subdivision, public hearing, so moved.
Second.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Nareszky.
Aye.
Waskey, yes.
I'll move resolution number 43, classifying, pursuant to, negative declaration on grants site plan approval for the East End Food Institute.
Second.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Nareszky.
Aye.
Waskey, yes.
Number five, can we do four? Five is a resolution, Pupinski Lot Line Modification, granting a 90-day extension approval to allow to, to fulfill the condition of approval for a lot line modification of Stacy Pupinski. That's it.
Second motion.
Vote, please, Bear.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Nareszky.
Aye.
Waskey, yes. Okay, do you have any public comments on all matters at this time?
Hi again, Mike Foley Reeves Park. I wanna start off by thanking the planning board for putting a halt to the HK Venture application because the Department of Traffic has lagged on making the intersection of Edwards and Main Street a workable thing. HK Ventures has apparently sued us for that. I don't think we can worry about being sued frivolously because they got into a tantrum because you guys did the right thing and held things up. Sorry, George, you, you spoke about traffic, and you're absolutely right on these high cube things. This planning board was responsible in attempting to pass a moratorium on industrial development in Calverton only to be shot down by a town board that didn't even give the people the benefit of a public hearing. They just said no. Clearly, one of the things that was discussed by the BFJ people was codifying zones to make sure, zoning codes, to make sure that there isn't too much leeway. Because as we all know, as we've all seen, as we've all experienced over the last 20 years in this town, that when an applicant gets an accessory to an accessory, it doesn't stop there. That's where it starts for the next application. So if we're not careful in protecting the historic Sound Avenue corridor, in protecting hamlet integrity, because an industrial zone was established in 2003, and in the last 20 years, residential communities have taken up space in those areas. So I think we have to take a hard look at those things. I think we have to acknowledge that these high cube projects, without knowing who they are, are already on the board, but none of them, none of them are vested. And that tells us. And that tells us that when the community, working with the town boards and the planning boards and the zoning boards, say, it doesn't belong in Calverton, not there, it belongs in Epcal, or it belongs in the PIP, there are areas where we could expand smartly so that we could protect the integrity of our open spaces, our clean air, our water. All of that can be accomplished. We're not looking to stop development, we want smart development. We need things to work in places where they should be, so this town can advance. We need PSE and G to put a substation in Epcal. That's where it needs to be. There are PFOS contaminants and everything else right now being discovered in areas of Epcal. You know, poison land, you can have BES on top of it and have an accomplished taxable revenue stream from land that poisons us, if we're smart about it. If we're not smart about it, if we're piecemeal about it, if special interests take control over this comprehensive plan, then we're all in trouble. And I know there's an awful lot of people in town that want to make sure that that doesn't happen, and just count me as one of the bunch. I'd like to just ask you one other thing. The Cider House Resolution was discussed in a public hearing and everything else, and I think the planning board really felt the anger of the crowd, and I think, I felt some anger up there too, because let's face it, Cider House thumbed their nose at us, they thumbed their nose at you. The things that they put as covenants in 2017, they built, and now they're asking for forgiveness. So Joanne, do you know when that resolution is going to come up for a vote?
At this time, no.
Any, is it going to be possibly in the month of June?
I am unsure at this time.
Okay.
I don't know.
You know, there's three things that would probably stop it from coming for a vote: a withdrawal, a modification, or just it hasn't been put on the schedule yet. Has there been a withdrawal or modification request by the applicant?
No.
Great, so then it's just up to the discretion of getting it on a schedule, and hopefully giving notice so the town can be here to witness what I am confident will be a no vote for this request for forgiveness. Thank you.
Good evening, TACR Church and Greater Calverton Civic Association President. Well, actually, those are my two topics, so you've covered Cider House, thank you very much. I also want to thank you for taking the stand that you have with HK Ventures, and kudos to the planning department for holding the ground and showing developers that, you know, we do have a conscience, and we want to smart develop, not just develop. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Um, can we move the minutes?
Sure.
I'll move the minutes of May 4, 2023, so I'll move.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, what do you want to do?
You can finish the rest of yours.
I can do the rest?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other business?
No.
Correspondences? Our next meeting date is Thursday, June 15, at 3:00 p.m., and right now.
Motion to go in executive session to discuss litigation.
All in favor? Aye.